Good evening. This meeting of the Select Board is called to order on March 21, 2024 at 6:01 PM. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Okay. For the record, participating this evening, myself, Liz Klein, Chair, Joe Fisher, and Bill Ramsey. If you're willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have one set for us. Ready?
Make a motion to approve the minutes dated March 19, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article Discussion. We have Article F, FY '25 Budgets. Tom?
Sure. Thank you, Liz. So I'm just going to give a brief overview of our budget process this year. I'll turn it over to Michelle, who has a couple of slides to walk everyone through, and then we'll turn it all back for discussion. So I'll start that back in October, November. That's the traditional start to our budget cycle. Michelle Art and I meet with department heads to walk through and understand their departmental needs, their budgetary needs for the year as they see it. Then we have those discussions. The department heads go back and submit their departmental budgets this year directly into ClearGov, which is our new budgeting software that we got last year. So that was a good experience, also new. And then during the December-January period, the Select Board and the Advisory Committee begin the hearing process. You all hear the departmental requests. Every department head comes in, walks you all through what they feel their departmental needs are, and that includes their capital requests. So we walk through all of that, departmental requests and capital requests. And then I put together my TA recommendation, my TA recommended budget. And this year, the town had agreed to a spending cap at 3.5%. So my recommended budget this year met that spending cap, which required some, in essence, some cutbacks from what the department heads had told you they need in order to do their work. As you'll remember, we did some cuts, we did some reallocations, and we ended up with, I think, in a pretty good place. Some $360,000 or so had to be trimmed from the departmental requests in order to meet that spending cap on the municipal side alone. The schools had their issues that they had to meet, had to deal with, and they've also presented a budget that's at the 3.5% cap with the carve-out of the out-of-district costs for special ed. Anyway, we then presented the TA recommended budget for the municipal departments in late February and early March, and tonight we're presenting the total budget. This includes all the municipal, education, shared, capital. All of that is being presented tonight, and this is, in fact, represented as Article 6 in Article 4 in the Town Meeting Warrant here at the end of April. To that end, Michelle has a couple of brief slides showing in summary form the total proposed budget for FY '25.
All right. Thank you, Tom. So there are just three short slides here in your packets. The first one is just an overview by functional area of all the different, so we group the departments together according to general government, public safety, public works, et cetera. So you can see here just how those add up to the total recommended FY '25 Article 6 budget of $158,854,600. And then we just use that same information to kind of look at a pie chart, so you can see, you know, which pieces of the budget are overall, you know, make up the bulk of where the town spends its money. So education is usually the largest piece there, followed by public safety, employee benefits, and our two enterprise funds this year. And then one other way, just to group some of this information, this last slide includes the little piece of Article 4 because that's counted as the municipal budget. We typically talk about these kind of four buckets of the budget, where there's the municipal budget, the school budget, the shared services budget, which is capital, debt service, employee benefits, and our property and liability insurance. Those are things used by both the school and municipal departments. And then there's sort of a separate kind of self-supporting piece for our operations like water, sewer, and country club, where the user rates and the user fees support those. So just another way to show what we are recommending this evening.
Excellent. Thank you. The split by function, is that typical? Or can you just speak to that trend? Is that what we typically see?
I would say so. That is typical. For the town, it's, I don't think it's changed too much in the past, but typically...
We usually see that 60-40 split.
Yes. Education is typically the biggest piece there, kind of no matter how you slice the pie in these different buckets. And then public safety and public works, when you're talking about kind of the pure departmental functions typically come in after that.
I will just note the shared services. The reason we call it shared services is there are education expenses within that shared services, as there are municipal expenses.
Right. Excellent. Well, thank you, Tom, and thank you, Michelle, and the entire team. I know this was quite an effort, especially using ClearGov for the first time, so next year should be easier.
I actually had a question on the pie chart. It's, I'm sure you'll be able to answer it. So on one pie chart, we've got education at 43.4%. The next one, it's down to 42.3%. What is the difference in the percentages there?
The only thing that we added to this second chart is, you see, it says Articles 4 and 6.
Yep.
So there's another, there's the Article 4 amount, which is about $781,000. That gets added to the municipal budget, so it makes those percentages change slightly.
Oh, I got it.
I didn't want to call it the municipal budget here and not put that piece in because under the MOU, it is part of our share of things.
Right. Okay. Makes sense.
I do love that Michelle Motzvier is the only person that would say about $781,000.
That's right. So if you have...
I couldn't remember.
My abouts are much more rounded.
Yes. And thank you, Tom, for walking us through the process. This has been several months. The department heads have worked hard to stay within the growth rate that we had committed to, and I certainly appreciate all of their efforts to continue delivering the level of service that we want and expect, and really being creative about reallocations, and really, you know, looking very closely at budgets to make sure that they are lean, but that we can deliver the services that we need to. Joe, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, I just wanted to add one additional comment, and really, it's a follow-up on our meeting, our last meeting, when it talked about that the Hingham Municipal Light Plant has been looking at its charges to the town, and I know that they are aware of the constraints that we're operating under, and they are currently looking at the pilot payment, which is payment in lieu of taxes, and hopefully we'll be getting some additional revenue from HMLP into the town, but that is, at this point, understudy.
Excellent. Thank you. But yes, we certainly appreciate HMLP and the Lakeboards partnership as we look at inflation, the rising costs on residents with taxes and other expenses right now, and their cooperation and collaboration with this. So more to come on that. But Tuesday, we pushed the budget till tonight to make sure that we had the correct utility rates and that all of the numbers were solid and as correct as possible. So I feel confident that they are, so that's why we're back tonight. Bill, any questions or comments?
Only comment is, Tom, Michelle, I appreciate all the work you did to make sure the recommended budget adheres to the MOU and 3.5%. As you mentioned, you had to get creative with the $360,000, and I think we're there, and I appreciate all the work you all did.
You know, the three of you made it very clear that was a promise. It was now a promise kept, so I feel good about it, too.
Good. Did you want to add anything?
Well, Tom, you also signed the documents, so it's not just us. It's you, and the schools superintendent signed, and we're all committed, and I think we're all united in meeting that goal.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments for members of the public? Okay. Are you ready to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. After months and months of discussion, I think we're ready to take the vote, which is a long one, so...
So I was going to start to recommend the fiscal year '25 Select Board budget of $976,861.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 Human Resources budget of $210,421.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
And I move to recommend the fiscal year '25 Reserve Fund budget of $791,302.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 Accounting budget of $430,097.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the fiscal year '25 Information Technology budget of $1,334,455.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 Assessing budget of $405,127.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the fiscal year '25 Treasurer Collector budget of $461,880.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 Legal Services budget of $395,372.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the fiscal year '25 Town Meeting budget of $80,500.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 Town Clerk budget of $245,475.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the FY '25 Elections budget of $78,930.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 Conservation budget of $274,855.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the FY '25 Community Planning budget of $263,375.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 Land Use and Development budget of $174,058.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the FY '25 Bear Cove Park budget of $40,697.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 Town Hall budget of $787,803.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the FY '25 G.A.R. Hall budget of $18,584.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
Joe, I'm going to abstain on the next vote.
I move to recommend the FY '25 Police budget of $7,815,673.
Second. Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Abstain.
Liz, aye.
Tom, can be sure I'm noted in the minutes as abstaining. Thank you.
Will do.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 Fire budget of $8,562,864.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the FY '25 Dispatch Services budget of $1,114,465.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 Building budget of $344,793.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the FY '25 Animal Control budget of $100,920.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 Harbor Master budget of $822,843.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the FY '25 Public Safety Utilities budget of $560,359.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 School Department budget of $68,925,339.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the FY '25 DPW Highway Tree and Park budget of $5,722,786.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 Transfer Station budget of $2,148,581.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the FY '25 Sewer budget of $4,339,400.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 Health budget of $407,506.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the FY '25 Center for Active Living budget of $407,961.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 Veterans Services budget of $308,962.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the FY '25 Health Imperatives budget of $2,700.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 South Shore Resources and Advocacy Center budget of $3,700.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the FY '25 Library budget of $2,338,683.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
And, Bill, you recuse him.
I'm going to recuse him.
So I move to recommend the FY '25 Recreation budget of $451,890.
Second. Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Abstention.
Liz, aye.
I'm going to abstain on this next one.
And I move to recommend the FY '25 Bathing Beach budget of $39,093.
Second. Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Abstention.
Liz, aye.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 Historic Preservation budget of $98,253.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the FY '25 Celebrations budget of $18,126.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 South Shore Country Club budget of $2,775,026.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the FY '25 Ware River Water System budget of $14,027,558.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 Debt Service budget of $11,357,273.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the FY '25 Group Insurance budget of $7,727,318.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 Other Post-Employment Benefits, O-PED, budget of $1,412,523.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the FY '25 Contributory Retirement budget of $6,759,093.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 Workers Compensation budget of $330,000.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the FY '25 Unemployment budget of $40,000.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend the FY '25 Mandatory Medicare budget of $1,220,592.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to recommend the FY '25 Property and Liability Insurance budget of $1,700,527.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to recommend Favorable Action on Article F.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Budget. I mean, anonymous here. Yay, great work, everybody. Lots of...
That was a lot of work.
Lots of tears to get here. Okay. Next on the agenda, FY '25 Financial Forecast Update. Michelle, do you want to walk us through this?
Sure. Just pull that up really quick. So the forecast group met earlier this week, I think it was Tuesday afternoon, to look at a final forecast. We made a few tweaks after, just in the prior years, just to make sure the numbers were correct. But usually, the last version of the forecast, you know, we get some late information in early March from the GIC about health insurance rates, so the kind of the last few items that we looked at here to close the gap on the expenditure side was health insurance, property and liability insurance. Sorry, let me scroll down so you can see that it is balanced at zero. Health insurance, property and liability insurance, the Medicare number, because that's based on the total personnel cost we think we'll have for the coming fiscal year. Obviously, the TA recommended budget, the school department recommended budget, we've put those numbers in according to the MOU, and the recommended capital allocations from the Capital Outlay Committee. So we made all those kind of pluses and minuses there, and then to close the gap, we also looked at, in the uses category, the overlay account. We had bumped that up over prior years to help support the senior means assessed tax exemption, and some of the other exemptions that the town has now doubled, but we're comfortable, we've worked with Aaron Walsh, the Director of Assessing, to make sure that we've worked with Aaron Walsh, the Director of Assessing, to make sure that we can still